Father, who art in heaven, I will be thy name, thy kingdom come, I will be down on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day the day of the Lord, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those that would trespass against us. Thee is God, and His salvation, for deliverers from evil, the land as the kingdom, and power and glory forever and ever.
Our pleasure to meet you so to one day, United States of America, silver for all that which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Madam clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Davis?
Yeah.
Mr. Saint Columbia?
Yeah.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Messina?
Present.
Mr. Etherly?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Six present.
All are present. Uh, the first item on the agenda for tonight, uh, regular meeting, August nineteenth, twenty twenty five, is the treasurer's report, and one has been placed before you. The treasurer has not, uh, arrived at this time, so we can move on to our old business section of the, uh, agenda. And what I want to do is item number two, I want to make that item number one. We have some visitors from out of town, and that will be an update on the watershed project. So all who are going to address the water pro- uh, shed project, you're welcome to come forward to the podium and make your presentation.
Good evening.
Evening.
Seems like it was just, uh, yesterday we were here, I guess it's been almost two years we were here, uh, getting the, uh, your approval for us to move ahead with the watershed project. We are in the, uh, we completed the planning, the planning, uh, uh, was signed off by the chief, uh, Chief Cosby, before he left office in November of last year. That plan is on, on our website. You can go on there. If you hadn't seen it, you can go on there and see the plan. So now we're moving into the design phase, completed the planning. Now we're going into the design phase. Put our RFP out, and we have the, uh, the engineers, uh, firms here with us tonight to present to y'all. They'll be coming down and start working on the design phase. The design phase, they'll tell you basically when they step up here about, about how long it's gonna take for us to design. Uh, and then we'll get to construction. So, uh, I'm Frank Beasley. I'm the executive director of the, uh, Arkansas Black Mass Association. Kevin, uh, Hunt is the special projects, uh, and he'll, you know, if, if y'all have some questions, he'll be able to answer them also. Our engineering firm is what iconic, uh, representative here. And then we also have, that's gonna be on during the long late, is Emmanuel with A B E S. And like I say, we're, we're moving ahead. We did have a pause there for three or four months with, uh, change administration, but we're moving forward with this project. Okay, y'all have any questions for me?
Mr. Beasley, for the sake of the video and for the audience that's listening, uh, we're familiar with your presentation, but you jumped right here as if a listening audience knows what, what you're talking about. Could you just found a little bit of what the project is?
You want this? Okay, well, the watershed project is a flood and drainage project that we introduced and, and, and put the application in back in twenty two, uh, twenty twenty two. Funding was awarded in September of twenty twenty two. And in that plan, I mean, in our, uh, agreement with, uh, NRCS, we ought to, uh, do flood mitigation here in, uh, the city of Helena and then out, and some of the outskirts of, of Helena, uh, on up to toward Elaine. So this is a, it, it started out with us as a hundred million dollar project, uh, seven million dollars, I mean, uh, it's actually twelve million dollars for construction when we, once we get to construction. So we had, we paid the, uh, to have the plan drawn up right at about three million dollars, and we completed the plan. So this is flood mitigation for this community.
Give them, give them a well saved.
I think.
Oh, and the, the, the watershed website is, uh, A B, A B M A, watershedprojects dot com.
A B N A Y.
Project dot com.
And you can find, uh, Helena West Helena, it should be project four and project five.
Yes, you can click on there and you'll see the, uh, EA plan at that time.
Did you? Like you said, uh, A B S and Sam.
A B. I'm gonna let him come up here in a minute. He can. And Iconic actually did the, the planning, uh, part, so they'll come up and they'll, they'll talk. But I mean, that's what the watershed project is, flood mitigation here in the city and then also on the outskirts of the city. And we started in twenty twenty two and, and it'll go on. I think there's, I've, I've, hopefully will be in construction in, uh, a couple of years anyway. Okay?
Yes, sir. I just wanted you to explain it to, to the audience so people understand. And I, and I say this, the, the good thing about the plan that y'all approve as we go into finishing up with the, starting on the design and going to construction, uh, for the citizens of this city and this county, in probably about four more years, they won't be dealing with a lot of this water flooding in those areas that y'all, the plan that y'all approved. So that's kudos to ABMA, but also for you all to vote on that plan. In about four more years, there's some people that say, it's not flooding my area anymore. So just wanted to share that. I know four, four years have come up real fast, but four years, about four years, somebody say, it's not flooding my area anymore.
And, and so you'll start seeing the, the engineers coming around, the trucks and stuff. We're gonna do an outreach, an outreach plan to kind of familiarize, make sure that they let y'all know which area they're gonna be in. We'll put something in the paper, social media and all that kind of stuff, because you don't want them out there and you don't know who's out there in your yard or, or in the area. So we, we, we're, we're working on that with the engineering firms also. Uh, Iconic, you wanna come up?
Come on. Okay, good evening, everybody. My name is Dewan Carter. I'm with Iconic Engineering, I, Iconic Consulting Engineering Group out of, uh, Dallas. So, um, I'm out of the Little Rock office. I'm the vice president of operations there. Um, Iconic is one of the engineering groups that's, uh, responsible for the Helena, West Helena Storm Water Project. Um, we have been awarded, uh, design as of thirty June. Uh, so we started our design process thirty June, and we have roughly eighteen months, uh, to finish our design portion is what we're targeting. So by the end of December, twenty twenty six is when we expect to have our design complete, which would be, uh, effectively giving you guys the documents to be ready to move into advertisement and hopefully award of your construction project. Um, your construction projects, we understand, um, is targeted about seven point eight million is for, for our portion. We are responsible for the Lit Creek and Big Creek watershed areas. And our design is, um, effectively to handle the, the flooding. I mean, that's, that's the simple way to say it, but you'll, you'll see, um, widening of ditches. You will probably see, uh, covert, culverts that need to be replaced. Um, and ultimately there will be a detention basin part of this solution that we will locate in the area. And the design features are to handle a one hundred year flood event. Okay, that's, that's what our design intent is intended to do. Uh, right now, we, we expect the area to be affected along Plaza Avenue and also along Highway, uh, two forty two. And, and along Plaza, that's between Tenth Street and Fourth Street. And along Highway two forty two, we're targeting between Plaza and Baldwin. Uh, that's, that's what we're looking at. Uh, the, the, uh, construction cycle, we're told is to expect to be two years. So I think that's what, uh, Mr. Hunt was referring to with four years. We're effectively having two years of design and expected two years of construction. And the life cycle for our portion of the projects is expected to be a fifty year service life of, of the project. Um, I did bring along, um, it, it sounded like, uh, there was reference to our, uh, public outreach. I did bring along our representative that will be working hand in hand with your city for any public outreach needs. Um, yeah, this is, um, our pu- our public engagement official. So, uh, she will be involved the entire time through the process. So just wanted, uh, to bring her along so she could meet everyone here, and I am, uh, I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Will your company be working with the United States Corps of Engineers?
So the NRCS, I understand, is the responsible. I believe this project was funded through, um, it's a P L eighty-three, five sixty-six, which is through, uh, the NRCS. I'm not directly aware of, um, any direct relationship with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And that's an interesting question. I just recently retired from the Army Corps of Engineers. So I'm not aware that there will be a direct relationship. Is that something? Okay, okay. So not, not to my knowledge. I know.
Your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge, again.
Usually it was the pumping stations that we have in North Helma.
No, sir.
It's all the questions I have.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Uh, it's a pleasure for me to be here. My name is Emmanuel Tuombe, and I'm the online president of ABS Engineering. Uh, we are based in Memphis, Tennessee. That's where we have our headquarters. And I started ABS Engineering ten years ago, and yeah, one question which was raised, what does ABS stand for? So ABS stands for African Business Expert Solutions. And I'm originally from Rwanda, East Africa. Uh, I've been in the U.S. now for almost twenty years. I got a chance to meet with, uh, Mr. Dan before the meeting and we were chatting. I told him that I went to school in South Dakota, Rapid City, and then from South Dakota, moved to Memphis. So I've traveled the world quite a bit. Uh, I studied engineer without borders in Rwanda when I was there. And we're mainly focusing on small scale project to affect the life of the community, like drainage project, solar energy project, and my heart is to see the community doing well. So I was very pleased when we got selected to be part of this program and to be the engineer for this community for some of the drainage project. Because I've been affected, you know, personally with flooding. And you know, sometimes when we couldn't cross some river because it's flooded and we don't have bridges. So I became an engineer so that I can have an impact in the communities. So being in this room, seeing everybody here, I'm very excited for the impact that the project we are going to be working on, that it, it's going to have on the communities that is in, that lives here. And for us who are in Memphis, we are heavily involved with a lot of drainage project for the city of Memphis. We are currently working, we are one of the main engineer working for the city of Memphis on many drainage project across the Mississippi River. Uh, I started the company as a one man firm in twenty fifteen. Now we have twenty employees. Uh, we have eight professional engineers, very qualified. Some of them were working for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer. We have another office in Asheville, and the other things which excite me the most, this is our first project in Arkansas. So we are becoming a regional, a, a regional company, and I'm very excited to be part of this community. I got here maybe thirty, forty minutes before the meeting so that I can start getting to know the community. So thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for welcoming us, and I'm looking forward to getting to know the community and have an impact in the community through our project. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have some iconic cards just to pass on some, just to show y'all have any questions.
Okay.
And I will get you all, if yes, all the information, but I just want to give it to ours first.
Yeah, as you know, our schedule is the same as Iconic just mentioned. You know, we plan to do the design within eighteen to twenty-four months. We hope we can get it done before then, but you know, we'll be communicating with the community. We get to know each other. You see our engineer coming in, you, we have our survey crew coming doing the survey. And if you, I was asking the mayor, you know, we'd like to hear more about the area where it's flooded. In Memphis, we have a system where, when you have flooding, you know, they call the city hall in the register doors area. But I heard like, you know, the community here, everybody knows where it flooded. So, so I guess as we talk, we get to know exactly and make sure our design addressing exactly the flooding issue that the community is facing.
Any questions? And do you have any further presentation?
Thank you.
All righty, well, we thank you. Thank you for coming down and, and making your presentation. We look forward to working with you. All right.
What I'll be talking to on a daily basis if I have to talk to somebody about this project, with this, whose car is this?
That's my car.
This, so I'll be in contact with you if I need to know something about the project.
Sure.
Okay, and you'll be located where?
I'm located in Little Rock, but, but I, I'll be one of the principals on this project. So if you have questions specifically about that project, I, I can help answer technical questions as pro- as far as the progress on, on.
And you'll, go ahead, Joe.
Will you be working with any of the local engineers?
So we're, we're in the process, you say local, define local for me. You mean here in Helena, West Helena?
In the community.
I don't know the answer to that yet. So we are, we recently got awarded this project here at the end of June. We're, we're putting the team together to s- to stay on schedule. The surveying, um, activity has to start right away. We're actually, uh, using a company out of the Little Rock area to help us with that. But as we perceive, we, we're open to suggestions on some of the.
One of his engineers standing right behind you by the door, you've met, not met him. This, this. He does a lot of work for us.
Okay.
I mean, he may help you, you know.
Yeah, so, so we're open to suggestions on any of that, if you have people you'd like to recommend.
And I just want to remind y'all, these, this, you all have two projects. This project, he's project five, but you may.
Yeah.
Cover the area that you made. It just depends on where you have concerns at. It may be his or it may be his. So that's why I said we're gonna get you this information as well. Once you look at the map, you'll be able to say, okay, this is project four, because they both are on the, on the, uh, website, and this is project five. So project five would be iconic and project four would be ABS.
Are there certain days of, of the month that you're here in town on this project?
We haven't established that schedule yet, but we're, we're gonna be here frequently. We don't, we don't know the frequency yet. We expect that our surveying group will be here within the next two weeks. That group will be on the ground within the next two weeks. Yes, yes, the surveying group.
Uh, will you be employing local, uh, employees as well? We like to employ some of our people.
No, I understand that question.
As it goes on.
I understand that question. I, I agree. We will, we, we are certainly open to employing local folks as long as we can.
Greater, they're taller.
Uh, understood.
We have a lot of local, I would say.
Now, that, that's it, but that's in the constr- Okay, I was, what I was gonna say is that, that may be in the construction.
Yeah.
Phase, but in the design phase, you know, we, we have, we're, we're already on the clock. Okay, so we're, we're putting our team together as we go. The surveyors are in line. We're looking for our hydraulics and hydrology modelers. Those are probably gonna come from a team of engineers that are out of central Arkansas, frankly. Um, go ahead.
One of the reasons I mentioned the, uh, local help in case, because of this bridge project, uh, uh, there's a future uh, movement in it and in some of the, uh, development of our bridge.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you know, we don't want to have to go back and do work twice, uh, uh, when we're drainage and things of that nature. Why I mentioned that, and that's why I mentioned the Corps of Engineers. They do a lot of work locally for us too.
Yeah, and unfortunately that piece, it's not in this, neither one of those plans. Like, I, I'm not sure what area is in, but it's, it wasn't, it's not a part of those two plans that we had, those projects, project four or project five.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda, we'll go back to, uh, old business item number one, the proposal for the county to take over police dispatch. Uh, at the last meeting, there was approval given by this body to proceed on the, uh, project. And the county needs additional time to get their written agreement together, because there will be a written agreement that has to be approved before this could go into effect. And so I spoke with the county attorney. Uh, what they would like us to do is move this over to the, the next meeting, which is set for September the second. They'll have an agreement ready to be presented to the body on that particular evening. And then they'll want the quorum court to also approve that, and they meet seven days later, September the ninth. And so both bodies will have to approve it before it goes into effect, but there's nothing to present because the agreement is not ready yet.
So we're just gonna move that to, uh.
Gonna move that to the September second agenda.
September the second meeting.
Right. Got one? I'm sorry, say again. Okay. Next item on the agenda is, uh, John Edwards, who's here to give an update, a discussion on the water sewer projects that the city is currently engaged in.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right.
See if that works.
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is John Edwards, and I'm the general counsel and economic development director for Helena Harbor. And before I get into my formal remarks tonight, I first want to take a moment of personal privilege to, uh, uh, have a moment to recognize, uh, the life of Norma Robinson, uh, the wife of Patrick Robinson, former, uh, treasurer here in Phillips County, and current, um, Phillips County Quorum Court member who, who died this week. Uh, we're a small community, and when someone passes, it, it's something that impacts all of us. And I'm, on behalf of the board of directors in Helena Harbor, we're certainly thinking about their family. I am, I am here tonight to talk about something that is so fundamental. It's so basic. It's, it's so pervasive in every aspect of our life, and it's water. If you want to talk about the history of water and how fundamental it is, we can go to the book of John, the check, second chapter, where Jesus turned the water into wine. That wine would not have existed if it hadn't been for the water. You cannot get away from the water. And I can tell you, members of this council, there, there's a day that I hope I can be here to talk about something besides water, but until that day comes, I'm gonna stick with a topic that I think is, is, is vital to the very future of, of this community. I've kind of made a little title for my talk tonight. It's called, uh, There is Good News at the Door, but we just only if we open it. We have to open the door. Some of the good news is, is that in the last couple of years, the city of Helena, West Helena, working with many partners, has secured twenty-four million dollars in loan proceeds from the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission. City has secured two point five million dollars in a combination of grant from the D R A and the Arkansas Economic Development Commission. We've knocked at the door of getting five million dollars from the U.S. Congress. That has yet to happen, but we're still knocking on that door. Now, the reason that I bring this up is that this is a critical step for our future. We, we, we have what I call a good baseline amount of money to start with on the water. But it's n- not nearly enough. This rehabilitation project for our city will take many more dollars than what we currently have on hand. But the dollars that we have on hand will be enough to get us out of a very, very critical, dangerous situation. So that's, that's the good news. To make this good news a reality, this is where, uh, the leadership of this council, this is where, um, whoever is gonna be the mayor, this is where our city attorney will play a big role in making sure that this loan proceeds from the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission, that they can be dispersed and, 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 but we call it A N R C, but A N R C is just not gonna give, you know, hand out a check. There's certain procedures they have to go through, and the city attorney be working with bond counsel, and there will be ordinance passed by this body, and then the money can start being doled out. But it's, as you heard from the folks with the watershed project, once you start doling money out for engineering, engineering takes time. Engineering does not happen overnight, and because we're dealing with a water project, the engineering has to be approved by the Arkansas Department of Health. This takes time. It takes coordination. While we're doing all of this, and members of the council. While we're doing all of this, and members of the council, I, I, I want everyone to be mindful that we have consent decrees in this city to deal with. We have consent decrees with our water systems, and when I use the term and, and sort of some of the people, uh, who are listening in, even though Helena, West Helena is one city, the, the permitting is like it was before. The, the, the Helena Plant has a permit from the Health Department. The West Helena Water Plant has a permit with the Health Department. The sewer treatment plants have the permits with AEDQ, so we talk about systems, that's why. But they all are under consent decrees, and this is very critical for us to not forget. And, and, and when I'm on this topic, I almost, I wanna say this. It's very important, you know, I, uh, I was there with the city attorney, I believe it was last June of twenty twenty-four in Little Rock, when we had the hearing with the Arkansas Department of Health. And the city is supposed to give quarterly reports for what it's done with the water system. Those reports are very important. You know, updates, what steps have been taken to get out of this trouble. It's very, very important to me as a, as a practice tip. When, and I've looked at some of the reports, when those reports are turned in, I don't know about y'all, but going forward, we need to have a name, a date, someone's who's responsible and accountable by name for that report. You know, some of the reports I've seen just have the scene, there's no, I wanna know who's, you know, submitting the report and making sure that those people are, are accountable. Now, in the packet I've given you, because I don't wanna make any assumptions about what people know or what people don't know, but August of twenty twenty-three was a very important time for this city. First of all, this report that you have in front of you, which was prepared by the, uh, rural, Arkansas Rural Water Association, was dated August the fourth. It was prepared by Chris Harris, and it's an overview of the conditions of the Helena, West Helena water systems, and I think it's a very good reference point. It's not exhaustive. It's nine pages long, but there's some information in there that I think is important for you as members of the council to know and to understand. This is the August fourth report. Just a few days after this report was issued, Governor Sarah Sanders came to Helena. She was here, Helena Harbor was having an event where we were celebrating some expansions of some local businesses, and after that meeting was over, we had another meeting with city officials to talk about water. And I was privileged, along with my chairman, uh, Bishop Leroy Carter, to be in that meeting. And I'll never forget, uh, one thing that Governor Sanders said. She said, "I can't guarantee you everything, but if there was ever a day to ask for help, this is that day." And from where I stand, with someone who's had a background in dealing with water issues and wastewater issues for most of my career, the, the governor and her staff, her entire administration, I think they have worked very diligently to support us in the request that the city has made. Uh, a lot of people overlook the fact that not only is the governor uh, responsible for what goes on at the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission as the, the governor of our state, she also is a member as a governor on the Delta Regional Authority. And she has a lot of influence on how funding goes with that, and so she and her administration have worked very hard to help us. But it's gonna take work at our level, and the reason that I included this report tonight, and remember, this report was dated August the fourth of twenty twenty-three, a little over two years ago now. There's a section in here where it talks about the valves in the West Helena Water Treatment Plant. And the same can apply to the Helena Water Treatment Plant. The West Helena Plant was built around nineteen sixty-five. The Helena Plant was built around nineteen sixty-nine. They were both really good plants for the day and time that they were built. But right now, we're in a situation, these valves that, that regulate how things work within the plant to treat the water, that cut flows on, that cut flows off, these pneumatic valves, they're old and they're stuck, and you've got people having to go down there like Will Stoddard and others, literally taking hammers, banging on valves to get them to open. And the word that they used when, when this report was written was that we could have a catastrophic event if these valves froze up. Now, I can't sit here tonight and tell you exactly how much money to the T it would cost to get these valves replaced, but I just want everyone in the council to realize that if you told me it was two hundred thousand dollars for each plant, I wouldn't be shocked. But I'm just, uh, 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 Mr. Ethely, one thing I just want everyone to know is that this is something that we just really need to keep our eye on and be ready to, to, to work on swiftly in case something happens. Uh, we, the city has had a history, many times an unfortunate history, of having to do a lot of emergency bidding. That's a very costly way to live. If we can get more into a maintenance mode, where we're not constantly dealing with emergencies, you, you have more time for competition, you have more time to think about it, you have more time to, to do what you need to do. But I just want this council to know that we could very well end up in an emergency situation with these valves. And someone may be coming back to this council saying that, you know, we, we have to deal with these valves. And the thing about these valves in a water treatment plant, if, 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 if they freeze up, it, the, the water can't be treated. I mean, it can shut a system down, so, um, we're, we're not there tonight, and there's a path out, but it's very critical that, that, you know, y'all, as, uh, members of this council, you know, be, be aware. And that's why I've, I've provided this report that was done, uh, by Arkansas Rural Water. And, and, and this leads up to one of my main points. We have, we have so much support from the state. We have support from our federal officials, um. And as we speak right now, you know, Senator Bozeman worked very hard last year. We almost got it across the goal line to get five million dollars to go towards the water. Last second, that money got stripped. We're, we're trying again this year. Um, we, we've got federal support, we've got our state support, we've got all kinds of people rooting for us. But we've got the people in this room, we've got to make this happen. And, and leadership is the key, action's the key. Some of our viewers at home may not realize that over the last ten years and, um, I may be off by, what I'm about to say, by a little bit, but not much. In the last ten years, we've probably had eight water managers in this city. That is hard for somebody to get their hands wrapped around when you're, when you're trading. You've got a man, uh, right now, Said Rose. I think he's demonstrated a lot of ability. I think he needs a lot of support, uh, from everybody in the city. And with that support, though, comes accountability, and I know this council, uh, we, we've got to hold people accountable. Uh, we have to treat people well, we have to hold them accountable. But if we can keep a team longer than a year or two, and, and they're doing their job well, I think it will, it will pay strong dividends for us in the future. And Mr. Ethely, you and I have talked about a chain of command issue some in the last few weeks. You know, e- everybody has to have a clear idea who they're working for, who they're responsible to in, in fixing things, and not just in the water department, but, but everywhere, but we're here tonight, and I'm here tonight to talk about water. Uh, it just makes things easier for everyone if you know who is accountable. And if we don't do that, I'm afraid we're gonna lose out on some valuable time, because we still have the opportunity. We still have the opportunity to fix this problem, but if we don't, if we don't, and I'm gonna give my opinion. Attorney Valley, I'm gonna give my opinion, but my opinion is that if we don't take care of this problem ourselves, someone is gonna take care of it for us, and we're probably not gonna like some of the things they do, but I can't blame them if this day comes. We can avoid this. And the way we avoid it is to follow the consent decrees, work through those problems, spend this money wisely, have financial transparency. I think that at every city council meeting going forward, there ought to be at least a few moments set aside to talk about water. And even if there's not any kind of big kind of update, you know, there, there, there ought to be some dialogue with y'all and the people responsible for the water system about what's going on. It's the only way we're ever, we're ever gonna fix this. You know, and I have a, I have a saying is that the, the mayor has to drive the train, and the city council has to help. You, you can't run things by committee, you know, things, operations. I mean, you can, but it generally doesn't work out. I, I keep going back to clear lines of communication. And we're probably never gonna have another chance again where we have so many people that are lined up from the state, from the federal government, from our friends at Arkansas Rural Water. I know we've got, uh, Community Unlimited that's, that's been helping. We've got a lot of support to solve this problem. But we've got to do it. Um, if, I will close with this. If we don't see some significant action by this fall, meaning we can't get these loans closed, we can't start getting the engineering out, we can't get the approvals from the Health Department, so we can actually start making some line replacement, we may be setting ourselves up for real hard the next few years. But if we do get these things fixed, I mean, the, the, the sky's the limit. I, I wrote a column in the Helena World recently where I talked about how important this issue is. To me, it's important to our board at, uh, Helena Harbor. And the reason why it's so important, there's many, many, many reasons, but I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna share too as I close. Most of the economic development prospects that we have lost in the last few years, we've either lost them because of a water supply issue, meaning delivery, or we've lost them because of a wastewater issue, sewer issue. We're never gonna grow the way we need to if we don't get these problems resolved for the city. And one of the things, when I came to Helena Harbor, I told our Board of Directors that it, it, you know, we have to worry about what happens within the confines of our industrial site, but if we don't start providing help to this city, none of us are gonna make it. The other thing I wanna say is that, um, it was a little over a year ago, about a year ago, I attended an event with, um, the Walton Family Foundation. They had some people in town. I had new staff members. They were introducing folks around. We were all down at Delta Dirt, and for the record, we were not drinking. At least I wasn't. Um, and we, they were, the Waltons were telling us some of their activities, and the room was filled with a lot of the leaders of the nonprofits of Phillips County. And it was a very diverse crowd. Most everybody in that group was younger than me, which I always consider, Mr. Ethely, a good sign. Um, they were filled with energy, and it came time for questions and comments from those of us locally. And, um, a fellow named Abe Hudson was the moderator, and when he opened it up for questions, I hadn't really planned on saying anything that day, but after about a few seconds passed and no one said anything, then I, I just had to say something about water, and what I said was this. And I waved my hand around the group, and I said, "You've got all of these wonderful people in this room that are doing good work for the folks here in Phillips County. And if we don't fix this water, most of these people won't be here in ten years, and neither will the people they're serving today. The good work these people are doing on the watershed project, many of these folks that are currently living in some of these areas, if we don't fix this water issue, a lot of those folks are not gonna be here in, in, in ten years. But this is a solvable problem, but we have to solve it. There's, there's always time to talk, but there's also a time for action. And, and we're at that time right now, so, uh, sir, I will stop right now and take any questions anyone may have.
Mr. St. Columbia, if I can jump in front of you, um, I, I, I need to respond to some of the comments that have been made. And I can't tell you how appropriate your, your address is, because while you've been talking, you see me and Mr. Valley over here discussing, we're getting text messages about water being out here in town, and it looks like the Hellendale Booster Station may be having some issue. Don't know what it is. Literally, it's just coming across right now. And so, um, I'll tell you as the council and citizens, the very first thing I did um, after I got appointed to fill in this, this spot was, I met with Mr. Rose over at Water, and I made one request. Tell me where we are on getting our loan closed with Water. We need to know everything that we can find out right now, and we need it immediately so that we can move forward. Uh, we have some consent orders in the city, ones at the landfill, but most importantly, one is with Water. And I told him, "We have one mission, and it's to start checking boxes on that consent order. We have to get this stuff done." And if you talk to me, you would probably hear the same sentiments echoed by Mr. Edwards for me. If you have talked to me privately, you've heard me say these same things. Um, we talk sometimes on a regular basis about Water. And th- th- there's no doubt that we have to fix our water system. It has, it needs attention, focus. And we talked about Mr. Edwards coming and addressing the council, the council and the citizens. This is the thing that has to be front and center in this community, and it cannot be treated the way it has been treated in the past. As something where, when the water comes on, everything is okay, and we look away and go in a different direction. It requires our attention on a weekly basis. I've met every week for hours with Mr. Rose. Uh, Ken Wieland, who's here, uh, called me one Friday and said, "Can you talk to me?" I said, "Absolutely." I stopped doing what I was doing to go over to his office. Uh, we've had meetings between Mr. Rose, Mr. Wieland, Ms. Mills. We've all, almost on a weekly basis for the last month. And so, uh, it is our front and center issue that we're trying to address, and we have a lot of work ahead of us. It's not something that we can solve in a few weeks, a few months, and even the money that we have won't fix all the problems. And we're talking millions and millions of dollars, and we just need people to understand that. I've had people complaining about the rates. Can they go down now? And I'm like, um, no. The rates are where they are because they are what is needed to fix the water system. And so I would want people to know that as of now, we are focused on water. We talk about it on a weekly basis, uh, everything from closing the loan to staff. Do we have a team that can get the work done? Uh, I've, I've used this football analogy where I told them, you know, uh, if we wanna go to the Super Bowl, we need to build a playoff roster. And so I've asked Mr. Rose, "I need you to assess your team. Can your team get us to the playoffs?" And if they can't, then we have to do what we have to do to put together a team that can, that can win games. And so that's what we're focused. And so that's what we're focused on right now. Certainly I thank you for coming and Mr. St. Columbia, you, you may ask your question.
Talked about the valves. I, I recall many a year ago, uh, visiting was one of the many directors we had for our water company. And you're right, we had too many. But I, I recall, John, that we replaced some of those valves in the Helena, uh, department down there. I, I recall, uh, talking about it and, and the council approving, uh, uh, replacing some of them. So I was, when you mentioned that they have not been replaced, that they're old.
Well, I think they're, we, you can go back and check. That's a very good question, but I think you're going to find a lot of issues in both plants with valves in both.
Not familiar with Helena, but I, I am more familiar with the Helena.
I would say, and I would say in some respects, the West Helena plant is in a, in some respects is in more fragile condition than the hell, but the Helena plant's got its challenges.
Some of the valves were replaced, I recall.
Well, one of, I think one of the things that we can all learn going forward is that I bet if you tried to, um, uh, go through and, and do an inventory or a check of when something was done, we couldn't do it because we don't keep good records. And, and, and one of the things our friends at Arkansas Rural Water can do for us is that there are a lot of databases out there and services out there that we can input, people can input what they do, um, on equipment. And that way you know what your maintenance schedule is, you know, when you put something in and you can kind of predict what the service life will be. And, uh, it, it gets away from us. I mean, it, it, you, we talk about, well, that wasn't very long ago. Then when you go back and look at it, you're talking about something happened 10 years ago.
And you talk about these water lines in Helena are in worse shape than in West Helena.
Well, they're all in bad shape and, 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 and they're not going to get, you know, they're not going to get any better. It's like, um, I mean, it's, it's just the longer we wait to start to resolving the problems, the harder it's going to get. And, uh, and I would also add, Mr. Ethely, that, that I looked at the census data the other day for Phillips County. And while they do a census every 10 years, they do estimates on an annual basis. Typically published them on July the first. And the July the first of 2024 census estimate for Phillips County was 14,661 people. Uh, we were over 40,000 people in 1970. The, every time there's a major outage, every time there's a major problem, it, it, it's just another reason for someone else to leave. And when someone else leaves, it makes it that much harder for everyone else who's left behind to pay the cost. So it, it, this is very incumbent upon all of us and, and, Mr. Ethely, I certainly appreciate your comments tonight because I think that's right where we, we have to be.
Issue I am a little concerned about. So listening to you, you said two things that really gave me a reason to have even more concern than I did before. You said, we need to delineate, and I'm paraphrasing, who the person will be in place that will prepare the paperwork. It sounds to me like that's a very fundamental issue. The paperwork is not even being filled out.
Well, it's, 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 so reports are being sent in, at least from what I've seen. But no, we, there's someone doing it. My, my point was when I send something in, I sign it, my name's on it. I sign it, I date it. Some of the reports that have been submitted, and they're not bad reports, but you know, I don't know who, who did them. I mean, Said might have, that, that's more like a practice tip. We just need to put our names on what we do. Now, the reports have started being submitted. There've been some challenges in the past on getting some reports, but that's very, the critical thing is the reports have to be submitted quarterly to the health department. And, but in my opinion, we, we need to have, um, you know, someone sign it, date it. So we know who's submitting that report. In, in my career as an attorney, I've never had a very good luck with anything. If I get a piece of paper that no one's name is on it, but they're saying this is, you know, that, 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 that's to me like a dodge, like plausible deniability. Like, oh, I didn't do this to, then anytime I see anything's got white out on it, my red flag goes off. So that's just a practice pointer. It's being, the reports are being done. I mean, that, all of them hadn't been done on time, but I have seen some of the reports, but I just want them to be. My suggestion is that they be signed and dated.
Appreciate the fact that you're, you're, um, being nice about that, but at the end of the day, I think that overall as a city, you know, and we've had this conversation around this table a lot of times. It's a management administrative, it's a flow, it's an organizational situation. I think that, you know, we need to focus on who is that person going to be? I mean formally, signature formally, paperwork formally, and all of that. You're right, we have millions of dollars on the line. And I know certainly if I was at the level of getting these reports and it's got white out and all, I mean, to me that just, that smells like it's not really taken seriously is my point.
Well, I, I do think some of the most recent things are being taken seriously, but there has to be a better, you know, uh, paperwork gets sent, letters get sent, no one responds to them. You don't even know who has the letters. I mean, that's got to be corrected, but that goes back to the chain of command and knowing exactly who to hold accountable. And that's, that's part of what, you know, like I said, the mayor has to drive the train. My opinion, y'all have to do like what you're doing right now. You have to ask the questions. You have to make sure that the money is being spent properly. Um, we've got a tremendous asset right here in this room with, with Ken Wieland. Um, I mean, the fact that we've got an engineer and his team that they, they know this system because they've worked on it so long. And then you can just walk around the block and, and talk to them, you know? And, uh, that's a, to me, that's, that's a, a real blessing, particularly in the situation that, that we're in right now. Because, uh, as, uh, Mr. Ethely just said, you know, now we've got another booster station out, so. But it's, it's a leadership issue. That's the bottom line. This is all leadership 101 and we've got to, we've got to do better. But we're never going to get this chance again. We're never going to get, and if we, and if we do well with the 26 million that we've been given, I think more money will come. If we don't do well, I don't think anyone will deal with this.
And I just want to say for the record, I do appreciate the governor. Um, I really do.
Well, thank you. Well, I appreciate the chance to get to, you know, that's one thing I appreciate about my board. Uh, they, my entire board, they realize how vital what happens here is to, we're all in this together. People forget that sometimes, but we don't. If, if this city does not do well, Helena Harbor does not do well, no one else does well. And the key for this city doing well is getting this water situation fixed.
And Ms. Ms. Miller, I, I'll tell you, I, I've been here for about five and a half weeks now and it feels like a lifetime. But I can't tell you the number of reports that I've read that said, we notified you of something on X date and there was no response. And so it is, it has been a systemic problem with our department. And one that just trying to find who, who has the skillset, who are the people, what does the protocol need to be? Some of these things are just basic things that we're, we're trying to get done now, uh, because they haven't been done on a regular basis. And so that's accurate. There's, there's nothing inaccurate about what you said.
Well, Mayor Ethely, do you think that we need to possibly set aside a meeting? And come up with, I know that, you know, you're ve- very active on the ground, but do we need to come up with a flow chart? Do we need to come up with some plans? I'm a person, I do better with structure and organization. If I can see something in writing, if I can see how it's going to work. I mean, is that something we need to do? I mean, it sounds like we've got some good bones in there. Apparently Mr. Rose is, you know, doing as much as he can, I guess. I mean, what, what do we need to do practically? I think that's my question.
I don't think it would be appropriate for me to address that here because I want to be respectful to all the people who, 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 who work here. I'll answer that question privately, is what I would say. In my capacity as a mayor pro tem, I'll answer that question to you privately. I don't want to address that here. But there are some things that we need to, that we can do, that we have to do better. And, and we are day by day addressing those things as they come to us. But to be honest, some of this stuff, every time, every week is a new week. And we're, we're dealing with old problems. And it's not like they weren't there, but they weren't addressed. And those old problems sometimes crop up and, and now it's here and now you got to deal with it. I, I want to say to the people who are listening, and I'll come to you in just a second, Mr. Maseen. I, I got a text message from Mr. Rose while I was sitting here. He says the Hellendale booster station is down. Uh, customers on the west tank, including the hospital are experiencing no pressure or no water at all, and the crew is working to get the pump station running now. So that's the status that I have at this point. That's the status that I have at this point, so.
My question is, do we have proper people working at the water company to do what you said needs to be done? That's number one, but number two, I'm glad we have somebody like Mr. Wieland to lead us in the right direction. But if we don't have the proper people to fix what we need to fix, it's just going to go on and on and on.
Well, and my answer to that would be, I think everybody that we have probably needs more training. Uh, and you, you very well may, may need, uh, I keep going back to a clear chain of command. Uh, as Mr. Ethely said, um, you've got to have a team effort, particularly at a time like this. And, uh, uh, while I'm aware of some of the people in the water department, I'm not aware enough to everybody in the water department, uh, where I could, I feel like I could adequately answer that question. But I can say if, if everybody is not dedicated to that job and they're not dedicated to, uh, going the same direction to fix our problems, then, then I see that as a problem. And I, and I've said this before and I'll say it again. You have to treat people well. And water professionals, you're going to have to pay them, particularly once they get licensed, but you have to hold them accountable. And I think the piece we've been missing around here is we just don't hold people accountable. You know, someone screws something up, well, well, you know, okay. I mean, that, that, um, that's just not going to cut it where, where we are.
Well, when I was trying to get, uh, to mention to you, are we going to have to send some people off to school for this training?
We need a lot of people to be, um, trained and they're going to have to have time to go to classes and take tests. And I, I think part of the challenge that we've had here because of the limitations of the, of the size of the crews we have and, and all the breaks and problems that happen with the lines, you're not really always in the best frame of mind to take a test. And we, we've got to help our folks have a better, you know, opportunity to do well on these tests in, in, in my opinion. And that, this is where I think that, um, and I've not, I've, I briefly talked to Mr. Ethely about this, but we have had some discussions about could, uh, some of the folks at Arkansas Rural Water, you know, help step in from time to time while we were, um, getting some of our people trained. But, and, and I'm reminded as I say that though, Attorney Valley, um, when we met, had that meeting with the governor, you brought up the fact that, uh, it would be nice if our people had better opportunities to be trained. Some of the challenges they had about overnight stay and all that. And Rural Water, we had a class here. And a lot of our own people didn't even come to it. And, and that has got to change. You want to talk about accountability, you want to talk about leadership? You know, at the, at your request you made to the governor, governor worked with the Rural Water people, they held a class here. And even when you had the class in this town, not everyone would come. That's a problem. We, we can do better than that.
This, that is, that is a problem.
That's a problem.
That answered my question.
Well, Mr. Ethely and the members of the council, thank you all very much for having me here tonight. And, uh, you know, I'm just a phone call away because, um, this is very important to the, to the Helena Harbor Board. And while most of my remarks tonight have been focused on the water, uh, there may be a time we come back to talk about the wastewater because that's a very important issue too, and it's, it's coming up, but tonight's about the water. But thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Thank you. I was about to say to please don't scare them and talk about wastewater. Uh, that's another issue that we're going to have to tackle and, uh, at the same time. We have some guests here, so I'm going to go down to our new business. We have Mr. Raymond Sims in the back who's, uh, here to present his legendary Blues Festival permit. And that should be in your package. You should have one. It should, Mr. Sims, would you come forward?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I'm Raymond Sims of Force Three Radio Network. I'm also the promoter of the Legendary Blues Festival. And I'm here today, I would like for the council to once again give permission for us to have our 13th Annual Legendary Blues Festival on August the 30th. And that's Saturday, starting at 2:00 PM. The 13th Annual Legendary Blues Festival this year is going to feature Pokey Bear, Big Yayo, Angel Faye Russell, J.C. McKellar, Big Bodacious, and several other entertainers. This lineup is probably one of the strongest lineups we've had, uh, for our festival. I'm going to need basically the same thing, I ask for basically the same thing, not to, to block several streets. So the festival can, can go without problems and that's going to be basically Cherry. It's the same thing, um, Missouri. The security that we generally use has been in the past, the Phillips County Sheriff's Department, I plan to use them again. The West Helena Police Department is always there, um, doing the things, anything we need for them to do. They're going to walk through, anything we need, they're available. Uh, hopefully I get an opportunity to speak again with the new chief and reference a, a few things I like to talk to him about. The festival this year is very inexpensive, very inexpensive. Uh, it's only $25 in advance and, um, of course about 30 at the door. And, um, that's going to cover most of what we have. The trash is something we're going to take care of. I have last year, uh, 2024, during our festival, we actually had no lighting on Cherry Street. I, I still don't understand what happened with that. I think I made a call to the mayor the day of, but I can imagine a lot of times the day of, should I say the night of, it's hard to get something done. But, um, in 2024 in August, I mean, there was no streetlights, streetlights on Cherry Street during the time of our festival. Now, one good thing about the festival, we do a lot of advertising outside of our market and attempt to bring people into Helena, and it has happened. Most of the advertisement that I'm doing currently and not most, but some is in the, in Memphis. Uh, you have a lot of people in Memphis that can come south on 61 and they will, we're not that far away. Do a lot of advertising in Little Rock, Jonesboro, Arkansas, and in Clarksville, Mississippi. No billboards, but advertising is also done on 40. No billboards, but advertising is also done on Force Three Radio. So that's basically it for me. I know if you guys have any questions, we are, you know, we know that tourism, we know about all that. Thousands of people, I always follow the blues. The one we have here is number 13, but they come to all the festivals that we have in this city. And all of it is great for Helena and Phillips County. I've concluded. Any questions?
I don't see any paperwork on this, any addition. Is it in this packet? I missed it somehow. I move if we approve his proposal, if it's okay.
Motion by St. Columbia to approve the permit, second by Ms. Miller. Is there any discussion?
Just a couple things. You also want to include Phillips too, don't you, over on the other end? Because you said Cherry, Missouri.
Yes, yes.
And then make sure that you do the request for those barrels, because they don't get those out as well.
Generally, yes.
Yes, sir. And then the other thing, a lot of people don't know that those poles that are there on Cherry, like between Missouri and Phillips, that are on the street, those are run by Delta Cultural Center. Yeah, so contact them because a lot of them, they don't, they don't turn those off. I was trying to think of what else. Yeah. But you were saying the big, the big poles, the big pole went on, are you?
Right, some of the, yes. Yes, that's correct. It was very little lighting. It was really terrible for an event like that. First time I experienced that, now. It's not all the time.
The sidewalk poles, that's DCC. Yeah, and they don't always cut those off, so you probably have to ask.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Miss Davis? Mr. St. Columbia? Dr. Miller? Mr. Messina? Ms. Miller? Mr. Ethely? Six yes.
Right, permit is approved. Thank you, Ms. Sims.
Thank you all. Thank you, everyone.
Next on the agenda, we have Ms. Helen Halbert. She's gonna come and make a presentation for a boardwalk application. You may have the floor.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am Helen Halbert, and I'm the Executive Director of the Helena Advertising and Promotion Commission. And I appreciate the opportunity to come and take a few minutes of your time tonight at this meeting to tell you a little bit about a project that the A&amp;P Commission's working on. We are interested in doing some improvements, some refurbishment to the boardwalk out there at our river park. And just to give a little bit of background, a few months ago, a couple of our commissioners had gone out there and they noticed that we had some boards that were a little past needing to be replaced. And so we took it upon ourselves to just do a little bit of minor repair. And as we went through the process, we realized that that boardwalk was built and dedicated in 1992. So for 33 years, it has stood strong. You know, we've had lots of folks out there taking pictures and bird watching and really getting connected with the river. But it's time for a little extra love to it. And there are a few safety concerns that we've noted, and we, so we decided to kind of come up with a wish list of things that we could do to improve it. So in order to do that, we'd like to leverage some of the money that we have in, in our budget and apply for a matching grant from the Arkansas Office of Outdoor Recreation to do this. And we held a public meeting last Thursday. We had some folks show up and there was good feedback from that, some suggestions that we took into account. But part of the process for applying for the grant is I will need you all to approve a resolution, which I provided a copy for you of one that I drafted. And the application deadline is later this, it's at the end of this month. So that's why I needed to come tonight and hope that you would take this up. And so if any of you have questions, I will be glad to try and answer them for you.
Questions?
It's a big attraction, and I know what you're talking about. And I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number Seven, that they might apply for matching grants.
I'd like to second that.
Motion by St. Columbia, second by Mr. Kyle Miller. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Ethely? Mr. Messina? Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia? Miss Davis? Six yes.
Thank y'all so very much, and I will keep you in the loop when we get the plan fully developed. And I'll keep you abreast of how we do with the application if we get funded for it. Hopefully that'll come to pass. Hopefully we'll know something at least before the end of the year, so I'll keep you posted. Yes, sir.
You have some improvements out there, what you thought, improvements, I know it's not that important, but.
Well, for instance, and I had a presentation that I made at the public meeting, I just didn't, in the interest of time tonight, I didn't bring it to your attention, but I took some photos. There are some places where over time, the pavement has washed away from where the boardwalk meets and it's developed a pretty significant hole there, and we've covered it with a piece of metal. But really some groundwork needs to be done there to make that a smooth transition and to make it more accessible to folks that want to use the boardwalk. There also needs to be some enclosures around there because there's sorts of some drop offs there that could potentially be dangerous. So we want to see that. And in the process of doing that, we're talking about maybe adding some gateway, you know, to make it a bigger impact when you go in. The signage has all gotten really worn out. There's a lot of signage along it about birding and various things. We want to update all the signage on it. And maybe out at the end at the observation deck, include one of those binocular stands, you know, so people could go and watch the river traffic and whatever. So, oh, and one other thing, we were talking about replacing the stair, there's a stairwell that, stairwell that goes down from the side that you can access the ground level down there, and that needs to be reworked. It's getting a little soft. But we talked about the possibility of adding a kayak dock so that when the water does come up, people that are interested in kayaking through that area would have a place to park their kayak. So just some kind of fun things. I think it'll be a welcome change. And we've gotten a lot of good feedback on social media, people asking about it and talking about it, so appreciate your support.
Your grant will be getting, making improvements to the boardwalk.
Yes, we're not starting over. We're just making it better. We're gonna, we're gonna fix the boards that we just quit working on. You know, we want to make sure that it's all good and sound, replace decking where it's needed, and then just add a few little things to make it a better experience.
Good luck to you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Halbert, would you hang around for the, the presentation of the conflict ordinance? It's next on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
In case there's any questions. Our next item on the agenda is the, there's an A&amp;P conflict ordinance and.
As you're all aware, some, conflict ordinance is, the city has a conflict ordinance. But for each individual person, whether it's a, each individual person must have an ordinance approved for due business with the city. Here we're talking specifically about Will Staley and his wife is on the A&amp;P, and there was an issue that was in the audit. Because, but the conflict ordinance is authorizing A&amp;P to do up to $5,500 a year with Will Staley. That's what this ordinance is about. This ordinance, number six, 2025. We can entertain a motion to suspend, place on third and final reading, reading the title only, but.
I think it's in your packet.
It's in your packet?
And this is something that the audit requires us to do on an annual basis. We have done it in the past when we've done a higher dollar amount with him, but he's done design work for us, and because he's married to a commissioner, we have to keep it on the up and up.
We used to do single approval at A&amp;P and we have to do double approval, so we have to do it there and here at this table. And this is one of the items that appeared in the audit, and so this is to make sure we don't get cited in the audit. Number six.
Okay, I move that we can approve ordinance number six, reading title on it. Suspend rules, suspend rules, yeah.
Motion by St. Columbia to approve ordinance number six by placing it on its third and final reading, reading the title. Only second by Messina. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Ah, yes.
Miss Davis? Dr. Miller? Mr. Messina? Mr. St. Columbia? Mr. Ethely? Six yes.
An ordinance to waive conflict in regard to a vendor contract with a specific city employee or commission member. Repealing our ordinance or part of ordinances in conflict with the plan emergency and for other related purposes. As stated, as stated before, this is about Will Staley.
So a motion to adopt? Motion by St. Columbia to adopt, second by Mr. Kyle Miller. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mr. Messina? Miss Davis? Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Ms. Miller? Mr. St. Columbia? Dr. Miller? Six yes.
There's an emergency clause, is there? Motion to adopt. Is there a second? Set, a motion by St. Columbia to adopt the emergency clause, second by Ms. Davis. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Dr. Miller? Mr. St. Columbia? Ms. Miller? Mr. Ethely? Ms. Davis? Mr. Messina? Six yes.
Thank you, Ms. Halbert. I'm gonna go back up to the old business. And item number four, honorary street naming ordinance, this is one that we've taken up a couple of times, but hasn't been fully dealt with one way or another. So in your packet, you'll have the honorary street naming ordinance.
If I may, Mr.?
Yes, sir, Mr. Halbert.
Mayor. Previously, what has happened, the version that you have here was approved by the planning commission. The planning commission again addressed it at this month's meeting. And they stand by the previous, this version that was adopted. As a street naming ordinance, the procedure is a street naming ordinance presented to the, to the planning commission, and it gives the approval criteria. In reveling portion in part three, it says the potential honorary must have a demonstrable and significant positive impact on the community or contributed to the cultural, economic, educational, intellectual, political, or scientific vitality of the community or have some extraordinary contribution in the service of humanity, and it must be a natural person. The city council shall consider the honorary street dedication in the city council meeting. And the decision to adopt honorary street name based on the criteria section shall be effectuated through adoption of ordinance. The signage in particular is a separate signs that the planning commission suggested that several signs have a distinct color. The color they suggested was black and gold letters like in Memphis and other, other areas. And that the sign clearly says honorary. Currently, we have signs that are green and white, just like our regular signs. The restrictions in this ordinance that they approved, it said only a segment of street between one and three contiguous blocks may be proposed for honorary street dedications. In the case of walkways or trails or bike paths, the designation shall apply to the entire length of the way. They should only be valid for 10 years period, and it says all previous honorary street dedications are declared to expire in 10 years. Signs can be removed at the point necessary by the city. And there are fees that are in this. The fees that are in this, the one fee that the city council paused on was the amount in paragraph six, section six, well, the cost. It says all costs of the reason associated with the fabrication, installation, the maintenance of honorary street signs are borne by the applicant. It said Department of Public Works will evaluate the cost of signage and labor associated with equipment for the honorary street dedication signed. And it says in addition to these costs, as determined by the Department of Public Works, the applicant shall remit a fee, application fee, and that's still blank because city council never decided what the application fee would be. Some of it's just to 500, some says 250, others suggested 100. In bold, it says the said application fee is non-refundable. Then it goes through the process also, and it says in pertinent part, that at least 750 qualified people have to sign the petition for, for it to even be considered. But it also, it says the application fee, that there's an application fee of at least $100 for administrative review. And finally, it says additional cost is the petition, so deposit the funds for the cost of signage for the works prior to replacement. And appoint received of the funds in full of the signage created and installed by Department of Works in accordance with the ordinance. It says these costs are in addition to the application fee. So those were the, the main factors that were in it, but it's much longer than that. But it's for your all's consideration, it's been, it was, it's been tabled since the Smith administration.
I think we need to increase it to 100 to 500. That's just my opinion.
You're talking about the application fee?
And then you got, you got, yeah, on page three or five and then four or five, you got, would that be the same fees?
Those are two different fees. The suggestion previously was in paragraph three that non-refundable fee is 100.
We need some money.
Yeah, the non-refundable fee was $100 suggested previously. And the portion that you said in paragraph seven on page four or five, that's in section five, that was $500, but the council balked at that and tabled it at that point, but y'all had discussion briefly. Application fee.
Oh, that's, make it more than that. Costs is in six, and then at the top of page four, those are two different fees, right?
Yes. They, it was a portion that's non-refundable, that's for doing the application.
That's the $100 or whatever.
Right. And the other portion was the entirety of the fee. So there's one, I think they're inclusive, the way, the way that it was anticipated.
Okay, and then, and then with that, there's also the cost of the actual sign itself.
Yes, sir.
Which could be, so what happens if, I know I'm thinking negative, but, but what happens in the event that, let's say they get to all this and then Public Works, they say, well, the sign is gonna cost, I'm just gonna give an arbitrary number, $1,000 and they can't come up with the money. What happens?
They lose $100. That was the number that was, this planning committee decided because they wanted someone to say, this is a significant someone. If you got the 750 people in the community saying, we want this street name, that's, that's a lot of people, that's just, yeah.
It should be tough. I mean, naming a, a street after somebody.
Right.
Right. If y'all want to dis time, look at it, that's fine. If you want to put the numbers in there this evening and, or if you want to table it to September 2nd, we can.
I say set the numbers and let's move on.
I say, I say C, I say C, 500, we discussed before. And then you've got the cost of the actual sign, which that, that could be whatever, and then the $100 non-refundable.
So in C, the 100, the application fee that part is non-refundable, and then the total fee is 500 for the application.
Yeah, that's my opinion, but.
No, the 100 is non-refundable.
That's true, yeah. That would be your just basic application.
Okay.
It's not like we lost whatever we had to go through the process.
Was Ethely suggesting that we just, Mr. Ethely suggested we strike the section seven and just have a $500 non-refundable fee?
So a total of 600 non-refundable, is that what you're saying?
No, it's total 500. He was saying that this, for the beauty sakes, take number seven out and just leave number, the $500 non-refundable fee.
Okay.
It's what he's saying. Instead of being inclusive, just, $500 is non-refundable.
Non-refundable fee.
And remove section seven of, move.
Y'all understand that?
Number seven from section five.
Delete seven, okay.
What did you speak? Seven, 2025?
You would delete that, you would delete.
Number seven. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number seven by placing it on its third and final reading, reading the title on it? Motion by Ms. Davis, second by Mr. St. Columbia. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes. Dr. Miller? Miss Davis? Ms. Miller? Mr. Ethely? Six yes. Six yes.
Order, do we need to?
Order number seven, twenty twenty five, an ordinance to establish the process for honoring the name of a street and or honoring the renaming of streets in the city of Oklahoma to provide approval criteria application fee requirement related there to, to otherwise provide, and with respect there to, there still needs to be a motion to adopt.
Uh, Ms. Miller? I was just gonna say, do we need to say, with, you know, with the suggest, with the, with the, um, the edits?
But at this portion, that's what, that's you.
Yes, sir.
With the edits.
Yes, sir.
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion to adopt with the edits?
Yes, sir.
First of all, it was just for reading, now you, you're for adoption.
Gotcha.
So you want to adopt it with the necessary edits?
Yes, sir, please.
Okay.
Motion by Mr. Kyle Miller to adopt ordinance number seven with the changes stated here in the record. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Saint Columbia. Uh, any discussion? Madam Clerk, what you call the roll, please?
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Saint Columbia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Etherly?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Six yes.
Ordinance passes. All right. Next item on the agenda is the sixty day pause of the three day trash pickup ordinance. Uh, I wanna say back to June, this body adopted an ordinance, uh, changing the trash pickup schedule from four days to three days. That was supposed to go into effect on July the first, we published schedules, provided notice, did all those things. And ever since that's happened, uh, nothing has happened. Um, there's been equipment failure, there's been people failure, uh, and the like. Um, I was the only person who didn't vote for this ordinance. And I think in addition to all of those things, I think there was some thought that I might change my mind and, and, and back up on it. Uh, but what has happened on the ground is in the past few weeks, has been, and employees, one injured, couldn't work, having to cover his route. We only have, we don't have all of our fleet of trucks working, we had some trucks over in Memphis, and so we are way too fragile right now. Because if anything goes wrong on any given day, the three day route is, is out the window, it just, it's not gonna happen. And so until we're able to execute, uh, what I'm asking you to do is adopt a sixty day pause. Uh, we got a flood of calls last week from people complaining because some people tried to get on the new three day schedule, but then the truck doesn't come, and then there's all, there's something that's happened every single week, so. What I'm asking you to do, and I think this is a management issue as well. I, I didn't, I didn't kinda like it from a management standpoint, but I think it's a management issue. And depending on who permanently occupies this seat, they may decide they wanna do a three day or some other, uh, some other rendition of, of trash pickup. So what I'm asking you to do is just implement a sixty day pause where we go back to the four day schedule, that's the one everybody knows and that we've done for years. Uh, and we put that in place for sixty days, uh, we see what happens. And if, if nothing happens, I'll be back in sixty days saying, keep it in place. If something happens, then, uh, you know, somebody may wanna change it or keep it or whatever, but, but. I think my question is how bind, how binding is that ordinance, because I asked several of my colleagues, and nobody remembers voting for it. I mean, I, nobody remembers vot- voting for it, I, I take your word if you say that we did, but I know I wouldn't, I, I didn't, I don't remember voting for it. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, everybody voted for it except for me, I was the only person who, who voted against it.
It, it was presented as a cost-saving, overtime-saving measure, and you all were discussing it during, uh, overtime, uh, presentation.
I guess it was just a misunderstanding. No, I did not, and see, everybody in sanitation knew that, and so. No, I remember, I remember you saying, I remember you not voting for it, because you, I remember that, but yeah, I don't, I don't remember voting for it. I'm, I'm not saying. I'm not in favor, I'm not in favor, so, so.
What you, what y'all asking for is a sixty day moratorium?
Yes, sir. Yeah. What, what's, what's the legal, um, process for rescinding, I mean, rescinding?
I mean, we could do an ordinance to repeal it, but you also, tonight, you could vote for a sixty day, moratorium, just.
Yes, sir.
Right.
I mean, we're not repealing it, but we're not gonna enforce it for the next day.
Okay. A, a, and I say that because I, I do understand some of the things that have happened, I get a call early in the morning saying, this guy's hurt, he can't, we, we gotta take another drive and put on his route. And you got two people, and then this week, this, this truck's not working, and so we need to, you know, juggle trucks, and so any, so fragile, if any of those things happen, three day ra- route is that, because you're trying to compress everything into a shortened period of time.
Yeah.
Uh.
It was kind of the same, but it was also giving them a day or two to work on their trucks, service the trucks, it was more than just.
Right, well, yes, and that's why I said it's a management issue as well, right?
That's all right.
And so from a management standpoint, that may be the way somebody wants to manage the department, may not be the way I would like to manage the department, right? But so it, it, it had a, you know, some, some, some influence of both things, and so, uh, but it just, it, it hasn't worked at this point, we do have we got two residential trucks, we got one front end loader, we got one boom truck that are running right now, we got a boom truck that may be back in the next week or so. We got a front end loader that may be back in the next week or so. We got the truck with the arm that some days, uh, particularly in the heat, they tell me it just won't go, and then they use, trying to cover three routes using those two trucks. And so there's some things on the ground that are happening that are not, you know, conducive to, to a three day route as well.
Yeah.
And so I, I'm asking you to pause it, if the council decides you wanna repeal it, you can do that at any time in the sixty days, or you can wait until the sixty days passes, however it goes.
Okay.
If you wanna keep, if the next person wants to keep it in place, whoever that may be, they may ask you to do so, from a management perspective, they may think it's a good idea, I, I don't know.
Okay.
That's kinda where we are right now, so.
So you just need a vote for, we need to vote?
The moratorium, sixty day moratorium.
If you're inclined to do so, uh, we'll entertain a motion to have a sixty day pause of the three day trash pickup.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Miller, second by Mr. Saint Columbia, uh, oh, Madam Clerk, what you call the roll?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Saint Columbia?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Mr. Etherly?
Ye- ye- yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Six yes.
I'd like to know who's in charge of the maintenance on these trucks, where they're stationed.
Who's in charge of the maintenance?
Maintenance, I bet there's no maintenance pulled on any of this equipment like it should be.
Well, we have two mechanics, let me, let me put it that way, we have two mechanics, and Mr. Messina, um, that'd be one of those issues that I vaguely spoken of, and I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna address people in that manner here in this forum, but, but, uh, we have two mechanics.
Well, do they have a form that they fill out every week, that they check off, they did this, this, this change, oil, and whatever it's supposed to do? That we receive, or we can find, or look at?
We don't have a lot of structure, Mr. Messina, to a lot of things we do around here.
I know.
Okay, so, I, I'll leave it at that, and, and if you wanna address.
We gonna, are we gonna get some kind of maintenance organization? Because when I was in the army, I had to damn, you know, tikes every week, all, everything.
Mr. Messina, what I'm trying to not do is address personnel issues in this forum. And that's why I keep telling you, I'll, I'll talk to you about it privately, if you like. But you, you're raising, you're raising some, I understand it's procedural, but we only got two people, right? And so I'm trying to, to, to not go to certain places in this forum.
Mechanics aren't the ones driving the trucks, I was like.
Well, the mechanics aren't driving the trucks, but the mechanics, uh, in my mind, would be the people who are responsible for the maintenance. And I'm not saying anybody has done, I don't want, see, this is what I'm trying, I'm not saying anybody has done anything wrong, but I may be saying something else that I'm not gonna say into this microphone right now, okay, so, I'll talk to you about it privately.
I got you.
Yes. Five weeks is what I said, Mr. Messina, I've been here for five weeks, all right, feels like a lifetime, but it's been five weeks.
But you're doing a good job.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next item on the agenda, uh, is not for any action. And this is the last item that appears on your printed agenda. There's a landfill proposal to purchase, uh, some equipment, it's for an articulated dump truck. I emailed it to you, it, uh, it's probably, well, you may have copies at your, at your, at your table, but it's not for you to take any action on it, I wanted to put it on your radar. Uh, both our water and our landfill are operating under consent orders right now. And so, uh, they have some things that they need to address, some boxes that they have to check at the landfill. And so at this point in time, that's, uh, what they have submitted to me, I want you guys to see it so that you can take a look at it. I'm not asking you to take any action on it right now, because, um, it's a purchase, and I want to be able to talk to Ms. Ramsey and Mr. Turner before we actually come to you and say, hey, we think we're able and ready to make this purchase, but I do want you to have it on your radar because of that consent order. At some point, we're gonna have to address some things with landfill. So just take a look at it, have it in the back of your mind, I don't know when it's gonna come to you, but, uh, I'll talk with them first, we'll make sure that, uh, we're financially able. Or at least that we have a plan before we bring it to you.
What's the price on this?
It's, uh, four hundred and something thousand dollars. Almost half million, the articulated dump trucks typically run about six to seven hundred thousand, they found one for four hundred thousand. I think the payment on that is gonna be about six thousand dollars per month. But the flip side of it is, they're having to move dirt in a different way. I'll have the landfill manager come here and address you, and there's some, some juggling issues in terms of money that can take place.
Moving this dirt in the past.
They've, we've been renting, we've been renting, I was sitting here looking at the numbers.
Yeah.
So from January to twenty third to twenty four, two hundred and fifty thousand roughly, then from September twenty four to April twenty five of this year, and almost eighty thousand, and then another fifteen thousand, we just spent from April to June of this year, so.
That's right.
We've been spending a lot of money. But, but Mr. Messina, what I'm telling you at this table is I did not come prepared to give you numbers on how we can do this. I just wanted you to have it on your radar. And in the coming weeks, I'll get with Ms. Ramsey, Mr. Turner, we'll assess where we are. And then when we feel like we're ready to make that proposal, then we'll, we'll do it.
Oh, I just wanna know how much it's gonna cost, that's all I want to know.
Yes, sir, it's, it's, it's four hundred thousand dollars, it's about six thousand dollars per month, and so, but the consent order is what, what's in the, in the rearview mirror, i- i- is, is there. And, and it's, it's following us, and so we have to do what we have to do to, to get that landfill back in, in compliance.
I got you.
Yes, sir.
And when, when the landfill manager comes, I think he's reminding you all of the history, I think some of the history has been forgetting, forgotten. Uh, when we think about that, when the landfill started in twenty twenty three, there was no equipment operating. And so you've had this crescendo of events that has happened, that has caused this landfill to be in the current situation. And that's not land blame on anyone, I'm just trying to remind everyone of the facts. Other thing, before we close out, I know, Mr. Messina, that you're ready to make your motion. At every meeting, like Mr. Edward said, that we do need to address the water issue, but we also, at every meeting, need to address finance. Uh, when, when everyone to my left testified, uh, at the legislative audit, they intentionally asked questions about, what is your plan, what did you know, what are you doing? And so I think the one thing that I, I've said at every, I've said ad nauseam, is that we can't engage in deficit, deficit spending. Uh, I think that we need to be looking at the plan for how we're going to address issues, and that's something that, that you only think about at each meeting.
You know, legislative audit, that we've heard recently, w- we were, they, they recommended us cutting back on number of employees. And I asked, uh, uh, you know, we look at some of the cities of our size, you know, and get information from other cities that are our size, how many employees do they have? How are they doing with their garbage pickup, other, the services that they render to the city, and all. Back, uh, some time ago, we had about a hundred and twenty employees. We got, we're on a payroll right now about a hundred and thirteen employees, we've only reduced our number of employees by seven, uh, in the last few months. Uh, we, we need to start looking at, and that's why I wanna know, what, what are our plans to, we've got to have some money. Uh, we're paying too many people, and there's a lot of jobs out here, I know, uh, we, we, back some time ago, we had all these executives of, of jobs, paying enormous amounts of money, we need to reduce all that, what are your plans to getting some of that reduced? And, and cutting out some of these jobs, and reducing it down to where we can handle and pay some of our bill?
Well, my count, Mr. Saint Columbia, as of last Friday, was a hundred and three employees.
How many?
A hundred and three was my count.
Three.
As of, as of last Friday. Uh, that's based on the information that was provided to me by HR. So to the extent that yours is different, that's, that's not the count that I have, but it's a hundred and three.
What about?
Now, well, wait a minute, let me ask you a question, a little question. The, the biggest cut, the biggest reduction that we can make, I've already presented to you, which is the dispatch proposal. That is a quarter, that, no, listen to me, I'm saying, I didn't say only. That is the largest money move that you can make in terms of payroll in one swipe. That is a quarter of a million dollar payroll reduction. There is no other payroll reduction that you can make in one move that reduces your payroll by that amount of money. That's the one that's in front of you right now, it reduces the number of employees, it reduces your.
What about the, the executive secretaries and all that?
Well, you, Mr. Saint Columbia, those things are out of order, because now you're addressing people. You're not addressing departments, you're addressing people. And if you're going to address people, you have to go into executive session, and you have to notify those people so that they can be here. So what we're not going to do is talk about individual people, because it would be improper.
I don't wanna talk about.
I said.
Individual jobs and individual people.
No, sir, those people are not here, they haven't been notified to be here, did you, did you, did you watch the hearing at legislative audit?
What's your question?
Did you watch the hearing at legislative audit? Did you watch it? I testified at legislative audit, they asked this question, my response to them was I know things that we can do, but out of respect for the people who are on the list of employees, I will not say those things here, because those employees should not hear me talking about their jobs over here in Little Rock, I said that in the record in, in Little Rock. Here, I would say the same thing, if those people are not here, and we're not in an executive session to discuss individuals, I'm not gonna discuss individuals. What I gave you is the biggest proposal that you can take on as a body, and that's the one to reduce the dispatches.
I got a feeling we're not gonna have an appointment by the governor, uh, at all, I'll be honest with you, I don't think.
Well, we may not.
That's gonna happen.
We may not have an appoint, we may or may not have an appointment, Mr. Saint Columbia.
Wait till the next election.
Well, well, that's not, that, 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 Mr. Saint Columbia, is not true, because there are things that this body can do. There are things that this body can do with or without an appointment from the governor. I did not, I, I have not waited on the governor's office to meet with the people about water. I have not waited on the governor's office to, to provide your proposal to reduce your payroll by a quarter of a million dollars. I have not waited on the governor's office to do some other things that you may or may not be aware of in terms of reducing spending. So I have not waited on the governor's office. Our payroll is, is, we're trying to keep it down, you have a proposal to help do that. Um, the question is, is this body going to adopt it or not? But it is in front of you, and when the agreement comes, you'll have a chance to vote o- up or down on that proposal, and that will reduce your payroll by a quarter of a million dollars, that's the biggest move, one move you can make. There are no quarter of a million dollar moves in, in the budget anyway.
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I?
Employees and our payroll, because we need to look, we need to cut it slash, that's all I'm gonna say.
And, and, and I understand, Mr. Saint Columbia, I, I, I was looking at the employees and the payroll, I, I, I keep saying this.
You're sitting in that chair, Don, so you're gonna maybe.
Mr. Saint Columbia, when I was sitting in that chair.
Yeah.
I brought you all of the payroll information. When I sat in that chair, I didn't have to move over here to do it, I've been looking at it for months, Mr. Saint Columbia, I've been looking at it for months. And so nothing ha- has changed from my perspective, okay?
Here's one of the things that I wanna caution about it, but when you're making cuts, I think you need to do it in the most neutral manner as possible. Part of the issue that it sounds like, and, and Mr. Ethel has been def- defraying some of your questions, Mr. Saint Columbia, but I see the turn, and one of the things that I wanna caution everybody around, and this is not pointed to Mr. Saint Columbia. We have to be neutral. The way you're just asking Mr. Ethel the questions is about specific people, as if you're targeting, let's get rid of this person, let's get rid of that.
Anybody's name?
You said, what about the executive secretaries and et cetera, but the thing I'm, Mr. Saint Columbia, if you, if you let me finish, if you would allow me to finish. The thing I was saying is you need to look at neutral ways of cutting costs, because the, 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 the issue that may present itself is that someone may perceive, perceive that the body is going particularly after them for whatever reason, and we have to be neutral in our approach. Of course, the city needs to save money, of course, the city needs to look at, at issues of finance in, in every, every way possible. But the city should be neutral.